Okay, so the first item tonight is a public hearing. It's regarding unanticipated revenue due to the CARES ESER grant. So, the public hearing is open and, um, Ruben?
Do you want to say a few words?
Yes, please.
All right, so, as everyone watching and with us is aware, we've been in this situation with COVID-19 since the month of March. In coming this year, we were, as all public schools were in the state of New Hampshire, provided an allotment of money called the CARES ESER grant. Ours was in the amount of $274,975.91. Now, this amount in this grant has already come forward to the board earlier when we looked at all of our grants and we approved this. That being said, all those other grants are, through our normal budget season, are accounted for within our anticipated revenue. This is... This is unanticipated revenue, and so the point of this is for us to accept this unanticipated revenue, allowing us to overexpend our budget if need be.
Okay. All right, so I think at this point, we have questions that the board might have, if there are any.
How do we get more?
Well, we might have to have another one of these meetings because it was reported last week that the governor is providing every school an allotment of money. I don't know when this will take place. I would assume that it would be sooner than later. I believe $200 per student. The question that I had for the superintendent's association was which average daily membership number are they looking at? Are they looking at per pupil this year or per pupil in the past? I believe that they're likely to do the per pupil in the past, so, which will be similar to what we, this number was based upon. So, the allotment, I mean, basically, the range of future dollars coming our way for this very purpose, maybe not in the form of a grant, we don't know what form will come in yet, will be probably anywhere between $225,000 and $280,000, depending on which number they choose to use for a student, for the number of students we have.
Which count?
Yeah, which count.
All right.
So, there will be, likely be another one of these sessions we're going to have.
Other questions from the board? All right, then, it's a public hearing, so let's have the opportunity for the public.
Yeah, so, I'll explain this anytime it's relevant, but we have a couple different ways that folks can comment this evening. The main two is you can use the Zoom chat feature. You can also raise your hand via the participant tab. That's going to allow you to actually speak as compared to just text something out. The other option would be you can always send a text message, 603-933-0973. I can put that in the little chat tab real quick. So again, those are the three ways you can comment. When you do so, please use your first name, your last name, and your town of residence. I do notice that Carrie Broderick, our finance person, has raised her hand. She's also put a comment in the tab. I don't have any other public comments, so we want to address her.
Yep.
All right. So, Carrie, you should be able to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. So, I basically just wanted to say I wanted to make sure it was clarified that any expenses pertaining to this unanticipated revenue was 100% reimbursable. In other words, the expenses are approved in advance and then we submit for full reimbursement. So, it isn't a split like an 80/20 split where we have to cover any additional expenses. It's 100% reimbursable based on what they've approved in advance.
Did everybody catch that on the other side of the room?
Carrie indicated that the expenses pertaining to this unanticipated revenue are 100% reimbursable. The expenses are approved in advance and then we submit for full reimbursement. Leslie is the one overseeing the writing of the grant.
And we had, in fact, expended it.
We, well, we, there were a couple items that came in less than what we had anticipated. So, currently, we have, as of today, we have $16,000 remaining, and that has been written for. So, we assume that that will be dealt with. We had some, one of the items came in about $16,000 under what we had anticipated, having to do with HVAC systems.
Okay, Nick, has anything else, any other public comments?
Nobody that I can see.
Okay. All right, then I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the $274,975.91 from the CARES ESER grant.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. And, a second?
One second.
Thank you, Heidi. And, just before I open it up for any other discussion from the board, you said another person did.
Somebody mistakenly popped it up last second. They wanted to make a public comment, so they'll come later.
Oh, okay, all right, fine, fine. All right, so is there any discussion from the board on this? All right, then, we're all here, so we don't have to do a roll call, but all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It carries 700. Thank you. And that also concludes the public hearing. All right, so now we're ready to go into public session. So, I call the public session to order, and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. And then, after the pledge of allegiance, we're going to just have a moment of silence in memory of Trevor, who is our former student. So, if you will, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Changes the agenda.
Yes, I have an addition to the agenda. We have an action item to execute tonight regarding budget transfer and authority to the superintendent regarding procuring nursing services.
Okay, so we'll have that under the action item. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right, so, public comments.
Yeah, Nicholas Handy, again, a public comment session, same three ways as before for most of you that were here, but for the few that joined a little late, three ways to public comment. You can go through the participants tab, raise your hand. That's the way that you are going to be able to verbally make a comment. You can also use the chat feature, or you can send a text message to 603-933-0973. All three of those methods, if you please just use first and last name and your town of residence, that would be greatly appreciated. All right, so we do have one already. It's Mark Haley.
Hi, so this is Mark Haley. I live in Keene, and I'm an eighth grade English teacher. I just wanted to say that looking at the plan for going remote, which also is represented in the holiday planning for this, that's coming up later in the agenda, I just have a hard time with some of the language in there where it is listed as what we are currently doing as deferential districts hybrid model. A true hybrid model is one where a limited number of students are in the building, where there's that in-between, so it'd be like half of the population on Monday, Tuesday, and the other half Thursday, Friday, with that cleaning in-between on Wednesday. And what we have is an in-person model with an option for remote families. And so, I just feel like it's a little bit misleading to have what we are doing being called a hybrid model. That's all.
Any other public comments?
I feel like I just saw a hand raised and it went down, so if whoever raised their hand wants to be readdressed, somebody accidentally put you off. I apologize if you do want to still comment, feel free to re-raise your hand and I can put you back in there.
Nothing?
I'm not noticing anything. We're just going to do a last call for public comments right now. Again, the three different ways that you can do it, but if you have a comment at a later point in the meeting, you do have a second public comment session. We got one more. Carrie Swift?
Hi, Carrie Swift, Jaffrey. I think I've said, yeah, Carrie Swift, I live in Jaffrey. And I'm a little bit concerned, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the plan, but from what I'm reading, it seems that the plan is to keep schools open in the days after holiday breaks. And my concern with that is that looking at some of the CDC guidelines around holiday celebrations, they do say that what most of us would consider a typical holiday celebration, being indoors, unmasked, with people who maybe don't live in our household, would be considered what's called a high-risk event. And after such a high-risk event, the CDC is recommending that people quarantine for 14 days. And my concern is that with, you know, so many learners and even teachers, you know, participating in, you know, holiday, typical holiday events, that we're not taking into account some of the increased risk and spread that can come, not just from traveling outside of our New England area, but just in being with people more than we have been in the past. That's all. Thank you.
All right.
All right, haven't had anything come in since?
Okay. All right, then, I guess we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, well, that's all made down. I know what I wrote in there. So, basically, just a couple things. There's, we are in the process of budget season, so this week marked the second week of our rounds of budget discussions with all the administrators. So, we've had one round of discussions, now we're into the second round of discussions. And again, the goal is to make certain that we can have a really strong draft budget before the Thanksgiving holiday. And right now, Carrie, our business administrator, she spoke earlier today during the public meeting there, was that she was, she's currently working on the default budget. So, once that is done, that will give us a good understanding of, at least bottom line, where it is we are aiming for. Certainly, there are a lot of factors to consider. A couple of these factors to consider this year is that we have a reduction in our ADM. So, depending on what takes place, certainly, we are looking for a reduction or looking to see a reduction in revenue for next year due to a decrease in enrollment. That could be between $400,000 and $500,000. Additionally, the New Hampshire retirement contributions for employers has gone up this year. That's true for police, for fire, so the towns are going to be dealing with that as well, but also for our educators. And so, it's a close up about 3% per individual, and so that is roughly another half a million that we have to consider. Now, there is some legislation that is at least being proposed to hold us harmless, hold districts harmless, this year for ADM. We'll see how that goes. Certainly, that's something that we're optimistic about. That would be helpful. And however, the New Hampshire retirement is definitely setting stone, so that is definitely something we have to consider as we budget. We are still in the process of doing some assessments all the way through K through 12. I mentioned that in the last time that I had a report. And so, the next round of assessments that we need to have are the state assessments for, that have been, we've been asked to do. And originally, I would say, and we haven't taken them yet, so I don't have firsthand information on this, except that I've talked to other superintendents who have given me a little bit of feedback, that the interim assessments, which were on, we've had access to, we've always had access to through New Hampshire SAS, the New Hampshire Assessment System, that the ones coming up toward the end of this month, I believe, at the end of this week, maybe next week, is when we're taking them here. There is a deadline that we have to do that by for the middle school, is that they'll be a little bit longer. So, they're not necessarily the length of the normal state assessment, but there's kind of in-between that and the interim assessment. So, it was a little misleading at first. I believe that the, though I missed the meeting, I understand that the commissioner apologized for that misunderstanding and the fact that it is a little bit longer than what we had originally anticipated. So, what I showed up here was just some information that we did have. This is not something that we're going to be taking place, but last year, we started to talk more about AP assessments, and so I just got the AP assessment results for this past year. I thought I'd just kind of throw a nice little comparison there, that though you're not dealing with the same individuals testing each year, and we still have one for growth, I just thought I'd compare apples to apples from a subject area perspective anyway. If you look from the bottom, we didn't do the biology AP exam last year. We don't have biology AP, but nonetheless, the biology honors class, 80% of them scored three or above. Three or above is, that's what you're looking for, for college credit. Studio art went down a little bit, but we were talking like, you know, one person difference when you're talking about the size of the class that's taking that. Spanish did significantly better this time around, as did English language and composition. English literature and composition was a little bit higher. The mean score was approximately the same. US history rose both in mean score and percentage of individuals who scored three or higher, as did European history, so both of those. And then calculus more or less doubled in its percentages and a little bit higher in its mean score. So, that's just a quick look, but that's last year's, this past spring, basically, during, all these assessments were taken during the remote timeframe and the prior year.
Okay.
So, that's just a little bit of the data. The curriculum instruction assessment leaders meet tomorrow, and one of those individuals is overseeing some of the data work that's going to be going on as we take these assessments, and we're going to be organizing and getting that data into a more usable format for all individuals.
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
So, you probably don't have this in your head, but how many students took the calculus AP or the US history AP?
Well, I do have that information. Are you asking me? I don't have the information, well, readily available to compare year-to-year of that, but calculus was very much the same. I think those two classes had very similar roster sizes. So, this past year...
So, you're talking 20 students or 10 students or...?
Yeah, it's around that 10-student mark. For calculus, it was... Seven students took the assessment. For, for instance, biology, we had five individuals take the assessment, so four or five. English, I think that one's a popular one, like it's taken in English, both of the English classes, but let me see. English... Which one's this one? This is the English language and composition, and that one had... 15, and similar, a little bit less than that in the other English class. Spanish had some good numbers, I think. Are usually around two to four.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ruben and his report? Okay, thanks very much. Right, so we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Have a motion? I need to pull something.
Okay. Okay, both the public and non-public? Anything else need pulled or changed? Added to? Okay, then, now can I have a motion?
I move we approve the modified consent agenda.
Thank you, Laurel. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heidi. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so that passes 700. And now, I need a motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. And second?
Second.
Patty, thank you. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so it passes 601. Thank you. All right, and we are now up to a presentation from Reality Check. Mary? You're on.
So, I try, I'm going to try to keep this to about 15 minutes because I know your notes can be... One of the prevention curriculum, it's drug and alcohol curriculum, called life skills training. This is just some data that shows exactly how it works, how it has worked over the years, and how it's rated in the United States right now. So, I don't know if anyone, if everyone here knows, but Reality Check, we are right down the street here on 17 Turnpike Road. We're a nonprofit, and what we typically do is provide drug and alcohol prevention initiatives and programming to school districts. Additionally, we started our five-year grant with covering this district and Conville, and Conville was a little difficult to get into, so Messina kept being screaming for help, so we transferred our support down to Messina, so we cover these two districts Our mission is to holistically reduce drug and alcohol use, addiction, and overdose, and the social and economic cost to people, families, and businesses by using comprehensive addiction services. The different services, there's five different tiers of services that we provide related to addictions. One is prevention in the school districts and communities, which is primarily what we're going to be focusing on tonight. We do do some outpatient counseling, treatment counseling, medication-assisted treatment for folks, telehealth counseling, and we help people get into treatment who might need rehabilitation for drug addiction or alcohol addiction. We have recovery coaches. We have specific services for employers in the region and the state. We're having another virtual symposium coming up in November, where we teach employers how to be more supportive of their employees who might have substance use issues. And then, the last column is our training, which is what we provide primarily to community members, school staff, anyone really that is interested in learning more about addictions, getting into the field, whether it's a CPS, certified prevention specialist, licensed alcohol drug counselor, or a certified recovery support worker. We also provide support for kids that might not have finished high school, or who are trying to get into college but don't have the money and want to explore, we'll help them find some of those non-traditional scholarships that are out there that aren't typically advertised. Okay? So, just real briefly, in the whole science of prevention, there's three different types of prevention. One are strategies that are universal, that are for all students. They're not broken down by any kind of risk factors that kids might have. A good example is like a policy change, like no smoking. In schools or buildings or restaurants, that's a universal policy, that's a universal prevention. Collective is more for subgroups that might have higher risks of exploring with drugs or alcohol, and then indicated are definitely for people that are showing signs of use. They might have poor academic performance or might be at risk of dropping out. Those are the ones where we really kind of get specific about what kind of strategies we would offer that population. So, that's all I'm going to do about that, the different types of prevention. Yep, so currently, this is what we, Reality Check, is working on with this district. We just brought Michelle Durand and Caitlin a bunch of red ribbon T-shirts for the staff and a lot of the swag for the students, tulips and yellow daffodils that the kids can plant in honor of, the red tulip signifies a commitment to living drug and alcohol-free, and the yellow daffodil signifies more around suicide prevention that we're trying to do more of. We cover all the communities in the Manhattan region and the other school districts. It's just skyrocketing. There's a lot of suicidal aviation that's happening, so we wanted to kind of highlight more initiatives that will help impact that. We do open house nights typically. We show up at an open house and set up a table and kind of inform parents about who we are and what we do. The governor just developed a youth advisory council, and we were sent an invitation, which I forwarded to the school here, and two of your students, I'm like so pumped to say, were actually accepted to the council. I don't think it's been made public yet.
No, we're not right now.
It is wonderful. But that's an outstanding achievement, especially for this area of the state where there's not a lot of representation at the state level. So, to have two kids that are, that wanted to do it, they, I provided some letters of recommendation, they got, they were chosen. I'm just ecstatic that we're not going to have a voice at that level. The youth risk behavior survey, I'm sure you all are familiar with that. It's a survey that happens every other year in the odd years. We missed it, this district and Messina both missed it in 2019, so I'm really kind of hoping that we can make sure that this happens because it interrupts trend data from 2003. And that survey helps us to kind of determine what strategies we need to be implementing to kind of address those behaviors that rise to the top. Then we have community service opportunities that we have students that are welcome to come, and we'll... we'll send kids to trainings, addiction trainings that want to get into the field or, you know, they can help with prevention initiatives, getting prevention coalitions built within the schools. We come here and do speaking engagements, and we do a lot of prevention messages around different times of the year, around prom and graduation specifically, around underage drinking. We have two grants from the federal government. One is from the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, which is just pre-vention of youth use and over time adult use. And the second one, it's called the Drug Free Community Grant, it's a five-year grant. The second one is called the Stop the Sober Truth on Underage Drinking, which is a four-year grant, and that's 100% here toward reducing underage drinking. In New Hampshire, alcohol is really culturally embedded quite deeply, and the attitudes towards use are really favorable. So we try to reduce that underage use as well as the social norms around that. And then the two new things that we're going to try to do is get, we've got a few students that are interested in starting youth coalitions in the school where they can either utilize some campaigns that we have, or they can start their own, and then it's mostly adult-guided. So it's youth-driven and adult-guided as far as putting out these prevention messages, because kids tend to listen to other kids, my voice here, not so much. Nicholas, next one? Again, this is what the measurements of the 2021, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey for the ninth through 12th graders. Measures alcohol, tobacco, other drug. They've added vaping, they've also added things like methamphetamines. There's a lot of mental health, suicidal ideation, dietary behaviors, and physical activity. We're required to report to the federal government on four different measures specific around ATOD. And students' last 30-day use, their perception of risk, their perception of parental disapproval, and their perception of peer disapproval. So those measures, we report back to the feds, and that's what kind of tells us what we need to be concentrating on in this specific district. So anyway, if anyone, if you want help making sure that that gets administered, we can certainly help with that. So the two prevention curriculums that I wanted to kind of concentrate on tonight are Life Skills Training, which is the one that I just handed out, that handout about. It is right now the number one prevention curriculum in the country that's got the most research behind it to work. And what it does is it reduces the the risks of alcohol development, other use of drugs, and overall violence. And it targets social and psychological factors that are typically promote, that would be present at initiation of use. So the outcomes are that kids learn to resist social pressures, they develop greater self-esteem, they're able to cope with stress and anxiety better, which also reduces suicide. And they can learn the consequences of substance use a little bit better, and then it enhances the competency that can prevent those healthy risk behaviors. For the high school and the middle school, there's two different levels, but primarily, they both include the resistance skills, the self-management skills, and the social skills components. Basically, they challenge misconceptions that students might have about alcohol and drugs, and also social norms, which in a lot of the smaller towns, a lot of use is typically acceptable. There's a lot of self-management skills, which kids can take a look at who they are, what their image is, has an effect on their behavior. And they can learn how to better analyze problems, consider the consequences, reduce the anxiety. Anxiety and stress and depression are three of the biggest triggers for substance use exploration. So we try to, and coping is one of the other things that we try to get kids to cope with, especially in 2020, with everything that they are charged with coping with now. And then school, the social skills, we're trying to recognize, have them recognize that there's a lot more choices that they can make in regards to social interactions that doesn't have to be aggressive, or, you know, you shut your mouth and you don't say anything. So it's teaching them a little bit more about how can we socially interact, which since technology advances have kind of made that a challenge. So there's 10 classes, 45 minutes each. Teachers do not have to do all of these. There's just, there's two classes on media and health, because media plays a huge role in what kids believe is happening in their world and to themselves. Family communications is also another one, so there's two classes on that, and then healthy relationships. Managing stress, anger, and emotions, these are all within the curriculum. And it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't have to be all 10 classes. Teachers can choose what they can, what they want to concentrate on and implement that. The training for the instructors, we will pay for that. We'll pay for the materials. We'll pay for anything that's program-related. It's not any kind of additional funding that we want the school to have to go through and or adding anything to staff, to the staff's plate that might, we don't want to do that. That's not the point of this. So the implementation part is great because it's a hybrid. You can do it in class, and the kids can do it remote, or they can do both. It can split up and do both. And then the evaluation at the end of the program to find out if it worked or not, or if there's something that we need to do different, will help with that as well. And then, Nick, you're all, you wanna, the second curriculum is called Time for Life. This is more around directed toward alcohol, underage alcohol. High school students, college students, they're either charged with offenses within the school or within the larger community or on campus, whether it is use, public intoxication, possession, impaired driving, or they might be a part of a diversion program. It is also geared for 13 to 20, who might, you know, ages 13 to 20, who might be already engaged in those kind of exploratory behaviors or at high risk. The outcomes of this particular one, again, has kind of changed those beliefs and attitudes around drinking, underage drinking. Their risk perception, is it risky to have four or five drinks in two hours? A lot of kids don't think that it is. I know Michelle Durand's big on the social emotional aspect and the development of the brain. Again, it's really difficult for kids to take a message and keep it longer than 24 hours. A good example is when we put that wrecked car on prom, you know, a week before prom in front of the school. And because of their, you know, I'm kind of speaking to the choir here, but because of the brain development capacity of that age, the messages that are more long, you're gonna damage your brain and your liver, and it's not, they're not necessarily heard. So this is kind of changing attitudes, beliefs, and what they perceive as risky. So the same thing, the same thing comes, I'm all set for the next slide, Nick. Is, these are the topics that this particular curriculum goes through, is what's important to me. So kids get to actually really kind of take a look at themselves. It's really an individual curriculum where it's, you're doing it with other kids, but you're really focusing on your own ideas and beliefs about consumption. It's got one topic in there, brain, body, and biology, but it's primarily about your beliefs and what you, your beliefs around high-risk choices. What do you value? What's important? So those are kind of bringing those thoughts that are typically maybe not ever talked about very often to the forefront. So kids can actually go, oh, you know, this is what's important to me, and this is what I value. This program's four and a half hours to six hours for the universal population, so that's for all students. There's a more, a lengthier, there's an additional two hours for kids that are at risk, who might be exhibiting at-risk behaviors for use. And then for kids that might be, have already engaging in more than recreational use or been caught, or may be involved in the justice system, there's longer hours that they can take. Again, they can do it in person or Zoom or hybrid. And again, staff don't have to do all these hours. They can incorporate the hours as they go, as they have time. And I think the same thing comes with this training, that we'll pay for folks to get trained. The Time for Life training's a little bit more expensive. That's around $900 a person. And then the materials, because it's a hybrid model, are a little less expensive, so it's more like licenses that we're buying. Six hours online typically for instructors. And once they're trained in it, then they can do it ongoing, which is the goal, is to, by not adding any additional weight to the budget, but training people, getting people trained within the school system, the staff, the personnel, that it can be taught year after year at your discretion. And I think that that is it. There's more information on the Reality Check now that we're, there's a whole prevention page that's dedicated just to prevention, if you're interested in learning more about it. But my, my goal here today was just kind of to let you know that this curriculum is available and that we're offering it to schools. If you want any more information about it, I'm happy to send that out. You do have Chris, Christine Lample. She does the, I don't think I'm saying her last name correctly. She's just a little lady.
What role, wellness in the middle school or?
I think she's in the room down here, or she was, maybe she was. Chris Langle, she's she's a recovery coach for us. She's taken the Life Skills Training. She's been trained in it.
She would assist?
Maybe, I think she would assist, yeah. With Greg Knuckle and, yeah. So she's already trained in it. So she's also pursuing her credential with the state of New Hampshire as a recovery support worker, and we just paid her to take that exam. So she's like really overly trained now to get to a whole nother set of needs for students. So we encourage anybody that's interested in getting trained to just reach out. Any questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, any questions on time?
Mary, I was just gonna ask, what is the status of opioid crisis as far as you know in these communities?
In these communities, in the Manhattan area, it's terrible. New Hampshire's third worst in the country. We are third worst in the country for having fatal overdoses per capita, only behind Ohio and West Virginia, which really are the two worst countries in the, in the country, two worst states. So the fact that we are next to them is appalling. It's really appalling. And the treatment that we have in place, we're second worst to the country, only behind the state of Texas. So we have this much of a problem and this much resources to deal with it. So we're, we have no workforce. One of the things that we do is try to build up the additional workforce to deal with the additional need. We have, we don't have any long-term treatment. We have no adolescent treatment. It's, I have to send people to other states to get, you know, to.
Karen, just follow up. Two quick additional questions. Have changes in the law around prescribing had any impact? And then, the other thing is, over this past year, do you see it getting worse or better?
Oh, since the laws have had a little impact, prescribers are, initially, they would get fined financially for not prescribing aggressively enough since the AMA had determined that pain was a fifth vital sign. And then it turned as soon as we determined that we were in a public health crisis regarding the opioid epidemic. And New Hampshire's overdose rate went climbing to 1,000% in four, four years. Now, prescribers are backing off, and there's outcry because now legitimate people with legitimate pain needs are not getting the prescriptions that they need. But it's because there's, it's very punitive now for prescribers to have to, you know, whereas before you might get a tooth pulled and you would get 30 OxyContin or Percocets, and now they would give you three, which in my opinion, three, three days worth is, you know, fine. But, but there's other people who have chronic, long-term, ongoing pain conditions that aren't getting what they need with them because prescribers just are, can't, they can't handle the monetary fines. And I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Just whether things have changed at all during COVID.
Yeah, so COVID, since like January, February, what's happened to this population particularly is that because we have a need for social connection and that kind of, those kind of connections were taken away. So that infrastructure for folks to stay strong in their recovery has been removed largely as a lot of nonprofits and support agencies had to close their doors or switch to Zoom, online, remote meetings. So the, the relapse rate rose 30 to 40%, and overdose rates went up 30% since that timeframe in the past seven months, yeah. And additionally, in jails and in treatment facilities and in homeless shelters, trying to be socially distanced, you know, increases transmission rates, which is also a challenge because this population's are, is health, their health is already compromised typically. So it's a bad time for everybody, yeah. We're getting better though, I hope, you know, a little bit at a time. The way I look at it is like the CDC has said, you know, if you spend $3 to $7 on prevention and intervention and treatment, you could save, you know, down the line in criminal costs and in health and medical costs and, you know, untreated addiction costs up to $15. So it's proven that prevention and intervention work. But the idea is to kind of, you know, prevent needing the treatment and recovery supports on the other end to begin with, and this is where we do it, so.
I have a question, but it's more for, it's for Ruben really, because we have policies in place that call for prevention in respect to alcohol, tobacco, to be women's rape on K through 12. And I think we have a fairly good policies around suicide prevention. So do you feel like we have these programs firmly in place, and these are, it's suicide prevention, these are policies that are in place for many years?
Right, so the suicide prevention, one big thing that has to be put into place this year, but we have a certain date to do this, is to make sure that all people are trained within the school system for the two hours of suicide prevention. So that's one thing that needs to happen, that still needs to take place. We have certainly increased the social emotional work across the entire district, and that's some work we need to continue to do.
I see that we have it in our progressions.
Yes. Just being honest, you know, we have a long way to go. So we need to work with our community partners. We need to, you know, continue, I mean, Michelle has, like I think you had mentioned, has kick-started a lot of things that hadn't happened for a long time. And so now it's a matter of getting more people on board. We have our assist program and our compass and so forth, working together to become a lot more streamlined. And also, like I said, to continue to work with our community partners to make sure that we have good programming all the way through and good research-based programming, because you can, you can do something and it not be productive or not helpful. So it's important that you do what is going to be meaningful.
Yeah, both of these programs are evidence-based. It's been like over longitudinal studies to make sure, so exactly what, we're not wasting time on stuff that hasn't proven to work.
And I agree with the statement that you made concerning, well, just as a broader statement. You know, putting the money in place early on, earlier is better, of course, and you're gonna save a lot later on.
As a matter of fact, the federal government right now moved all of the Drug Free Community Grants to oversight administration to the CDC as it's now being viewed as a disease, a preventable disease, so.
Where are you in your grant years?
How am I?
Where are you in your grant years?
I am in year four. We, October, our fiscal year is October 1 to 30, we're in year four. I'm sorry, we just ended year four. We now started year five. And at the end of year five, we can apply for another second five-year cycle. And at that point, we, our strategies would include more environmental strategies, which would, you know, change more policies and make sure that, for instance, like the ordinances that rule the town of Jacque would say, you know, less alcohol at outdoor events. So that, so like, for instance, I always use this example of the night of 1,000 cupcakes on the same lawn as wine tasting. And the two don't go together, and should it go together? Because it's showing our kids, you know, things that just shouldn't go together. So it's kind of like broadening, like there's no smoking at the beach, things like that, or a couple of places. So it's kind of just shifting the entire culture more. And everybody within the community ends up being a part of it. It's not just a school-owned, the school does its part, for sure, and is where most of those strategies are concentrated. But in the larger community, everybody can do their part, the different sectors.
Other questions for Mary?
I have a question. So if we were to have more individuals trained to implement one of both these curriculums, and let's say we just looked at the high school and it's eight to 12 hours of training, I'm wondering if you have advice of, you know, should those hours be spread out throughout the year? Is it something that tends to happen over the course of a month? Or is it the same exact thing? Are the kids in ninth grade gonna give the same delivery and then 10th and 11th? You know, I'm just wondering sort of what the picture would be to have it be most effective in terms of...
The training, the training part's absolutely up to the staff that are taking it, like how they can get it into their schedule. Because I know that everyone's right down to the minute and that putting something else into the schedule really better be important because it's packed. So trying to find a place for it is really up to the, you know, the district that decides what goes and where. And then the staff themselves really kind of have to figure out, how they get trained on it, right, and then how they implement it. But all districts do it all different kind of ways. Yeah, there's no like set. It has to be a flexible program, you know, because each district's needs are different.
Wondering if there was a typical way in which it's done, but...
The questions for Mary?
I just wanna say thank you so much, I really enjoyed that presentation. I feel very excited about the information you shared. I think prevention is really just our best ally in this. And I really like that this is a K through 12 sort of initiative. So I just appreciate you taking the time to come and share all of this information.
Thanks. Oh, I should've, I think a few years ago, I just... But I will say that prevention, I love getting into the schools and doing a prevention case because I'm gonna try to get some FPU in Keene State and relevant college interns to put their plans to major in substance prevention. Like for the state, I'm a certified prevention specialist, an international certification. If I went to a different country, it's all the same, the science is the same. But in New Hampshire, there's only 38 in state. And when I was at the Bureau, there was, I did a two-year fellowship where we grew the CPS capacity to 88, but that's still very minimal. And then, because the administration changed so much, the people just fell out of staying, of seeing the importance. Even on the federal level, they just kind of put the importance of prevention on the back burner. And it's almost like COVID, you know, the second wave that hits. Like as soon as you start being, what's the word, complacent, then there's a resurgence, and that's what's happening. So now there's another focus, that's why we moved to the CDC, because they're like, okay, now we're gonna let people into shape, so. Yeah, so I'm glad to have come, and I should've come earlier, but... I'm looking forward to doing something meaningful that's measurable and that we can see over time that we've made a difference. I see that you got the same memo.
So I'm just thinking, I'm not sure when the wellness...
We meet again next Monday.
Right, so I'm just wondering if this might be something that starts there and then explore that a bit more and then go from there. Yeah, can we get a sense of what we're doing?
Of what, you think, in a sense of what's happening or anything?
What curriculum are we... What is our curriculum? For this?
And I can, I'm more than happy to come back at a different time to do a more extensive presentation on more details about how this might roll out and the other options, it's not just prevention curriculum that we offer, it's time to stop, so. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Listening?
Thank you.
Have a good day.
See ya.
So, next up, our discussion around the holiday season planning.
All right, so the, over the last couple weeks, we've done a survey. One survey with the staff in the district, a survey for families in the community. And so we look at kind of, the idea here is that there, you know, we are in a situation where, though our numbers in the region have been low, continue to be low, we also know that it has been stated that once people are inside more, that perhaps the spread would be more significant, that you might see some, a second wave, a spike. There are colleges, of course, that are, once they leave for Thanksgiving, they are not returning until in January. We have some schools, some other public schools that are doing similar strategies. Others are just continuing to function as is and use their decision-making process that they have. But I think it was important that we started to have this conversation at a more in-depth level. And the first part of having that conversation is just to look at some data and to talk about what it is we value as criteria. And so, and we've already talked about valuing certain elements of criteria, and so we'll talk about that a little bit later. So the criteria for evaluation that we have here is a survey for faculty and staff, survey of families. A little look at historical data, and that's more to see, so that people understand, like, what the matrices mean or what's being talked about here. Plans for mitigating any faculty-staffing issues that might occur through this process. If, like, for instance, some staff, because of the holiday season, aren't able to be in person, would we be able to handle that? What would we be doing, that sort of thing? Community spread, and then just the decision-making matrix. So with the faculty and staff survey, we had quite a few individuals respond, 218. That's for teachers, support staff, custodians, secretaries, et cetera, anyone who works, people from the SAU. And so when we look at two areas, Thanksgiving break and December break, we were saying, all right, what's the likelihood that we would be able to remain open? What's the likelihood in this current model that we have? What's the likelihood we would need to go remote? Are we gonna be in normal? Are we gonna be strained? Are we gonna be at that third level of just basically overwhelmed? That third category where it's, it just can't be done? And so we have, the findings would show that RMS, JGS, and the middle school would, through, after that Thanksgiving break, would experience some straining of staff, with the largest impact being RMS. CHS would not be strained during that timeframe. You can see a picture over there to the right of what it would look like on the various days, assuming all those days remain the same in the area of staffing. Strained, because right now, you know, we're strained a fair amount of the time here. We have a couple people out here, four people out sometimes. And so we've been fortunate to be able to have substitutes and to be able to, in some cases, we have some long-term subs that we hired that would have eased things. And so it feels even more normal sometimes. But nonetheless, we would expect that it would be in that strained, but manageable category during those timeframes. December break would be similar as it comes to faculty and staff. All schools would be in that strained area, but CHS would still have a slightly better situation when it came to staffing. So then when we think about the matrix, we talk about community, what's going on in the community with COVID, what's happening with our staff. You know, there's a couple of different areas that we're looking at when making these decisions. And so, you know, our staff is well-aware of making good decisions and making certain that they are not in situations that compromise their health and well-being. And so the majority are able to be here for that experience afterwards of Thanksgiving break and December break.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what was the question, or what are the responses that lead to a forecast of, is there a potential stress? Strain?
Strain.
Was the question, do you plan to travel outside of New England? Or do you...
Yeah, so we asked two questions. I think that that's a great question, and it's fine to answer right here. Is that, so the question is, for those who could not hear, is what was the criteria that was used for strain? And so there were two questions, pretty much, that we had, both for each holiday. Was, are you traveling outside of New England? So we were told that if people travel outside of New England, that they are to, upon coming back, they're quarantined for 14 days.
That's New Hampshire's guidelines.
That's New Hampshire's guidelines, yes.
So these are employees that are electing to travel outside of the area that New Hampshire deems safe, if you will, and that when they return, they would have to quarantine.
Yes, so if, yeah, so if staff were to travel outside of New England during the Thanksgiving timeframe or the summer break timeframe, that would be outside of what New Hampshire is saying. You know, you'd come back as a, without, you would have, you would have to come back to a quarantine.
For that personal choice, the district suffers the consequences.
Well, what I was, you know, what I was saying here was that our staff, actually, though they'll be strained, it's not a situation where the staff's data on that section was causing the district to have to go fully remote due to our decision-making matrix. And so while there are some staff, and I'm using staff broadly, again, support staff, professional staff, custodial staff, SAU staff, and so forth, that with the responses that we received and looking at the data and the progress we've made so far over the last month, this is the scenario that would take place due to those numbers. There is a possibility that... Sorry?
And this chart shows one week's impact, it would really continue into the next week.
Yeah, it's a sample, it's a sample. Obviously, other things can impact that, such as illness and, you know, other things taking place, just like they can right now.
And this that we're looking at right now is just staff? That we have the other side of it?
This is currently faculty and staff, yes. So the family survey, we had about 406 responses that reflects about 800 learners, a little bit fewer than that. And so that's a decent percentage, a little over 50% of our learners. So based upon that, and we do find out through our other surveys that we do have, like our last survey that we had earlier this year when we were talking about remote and in-person and, you know, what have you, what your choices were, we had an incredibly high response rate. And we find that after about 250 to 350 responses, the percentages don't change a whole lot. I did send out an email this past Friday. We did get quite a few, you know, another good chunk of responses, and the numbers didn't change any from what we had before. Everything hung around in the same percentages. And so again, the first, the students, the percentage of students traveling on a break is about a little under 4%. And CHS is kind of the opposite of the faculty, that the highest number of students who would be traveling outside of the New England area would be about 5%. And then December, it switches up a little bit, and it's closer to 4, I mean, sorry, 5 to 6% of individuals traveling outside of New England. Those individuals having to come back and quarantine during that timeframe. So 95-plus percent of individuals aren't planning to do any of that sort of travel. There was another question that we asked, because I think your last question, if I can go back to the previous slide, you were saying what kind of goes into that strain? I think an individual, it was Kelly, that had made a public comment concerning large group events. So I put that in there, even though at the time, New Hampshire is not saying that you have to quarantine after these large group events or get tested or anything of that nature. They do define, however, the number of individuals as, like, with the outside of your bubble, is kind of how we framed it. I would say that in both categories, both faculty and staff, and also the families in our community, if you were to double those numbers, that would be the numbers that you would be seeing for people who are going into larger gatherings. Now, as our staff is concerned, I'm sure our staff is, I mean, they want to be healthy, they want to make good choices. I'm sure that our staff, on a regular basis, you know, is out there wearing masks, they're socially distanced and so forth. And then, you know, so I think that that's not an issue there. Again, the metric that was being used was the, you must quarantine for 14 days due to outside of New England travel. That is the, that is the standard we were using for this.
Ruben, can you just clarify for this, the staff capacity? Who is included in that? Who was that describing? Everyone?
Well, it's, you know, there's... You do have to look at the individuals who respond and what their positions are. So, you know, if, where, what has, what has the greatest impact to... I'm gonna be very general now, not having to do with this survey. But what staffing has the greatest impact on this matrix? Certainly the teachers do, the classroom teachers. And then I would say that support staff is right up there. When I mean support staff, I mean the instructional associates. Special ed instructors who might not, or service providers who might not necessarily be in class would be right after that. So the greater the amount of contact you have, I guess you could say, with learners, supervision, et cetera, you know, responsibilities, that's kind of how it goes. So, of course, on the flip side, if you didn't have anyone who could clean the facilities, that would be a problem too, right? So it's...
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how we sort of got to this strain. You know, like...
Strain would, strain would mean we would need to have some substitutes that would be either, you know, in place of a teacher, let's say, who may, you know, be going to visit someone they haven't seen in a couple of years.
So we looked at...
Or an instructional associate usually, if that's tied into an IEP. There are some adjustments that can be made temporarily, you know, to ease these difficulties for staffing, you know, in that area. But you have to look at every case individually.
I mean, you know, we've talked about the holistic idea of this educational community, and I, while you can't require the bus company and the food service organization to do similar surveys, clearly those two entities also would have considerable ramifications.
That is a good point. The bus company, I believe, has done survey. I don't have the information on that at this point. I don't have the information on that at this point in time. Certainly that would make a significant impact on our ability to to continue in the current fashion.
Laurel's point, I mean, if we have a contact with the bus company, you know, I mean, I guess that, that wouldn't that super, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to be a grinch, literally, but I just, I'm curious how we, how we affect an educational system if everybody's just gonna go, yeah, I'm gonna go to New York this weekend and
Yeah, yeah.
Who cares about that?
You're right. So, I mean, I've received, since embarking on this, I've received quite a few emails. Some on one side, some on the other, most most alluding to something that maybe Laurel stated a little bit earlier. People knowing that this is, is a situation and then electing to go so, you know, anyway, other people saying, in my job, I can't do that. That's, I'm not, I'm prohibited from doing that. So that might go along with what you were saying. I don't know if the bus company has that. They're a different entity than we are. They might be able to prohibit. My guess is that through a survey, if they're surveying, that's probably not necessarily the case. You know, a public school is a different entity altogether.
And then in different, in different places, so different companies have different policies. And so some of those quarantine days at some companies are paid days or others are elected earned time days, sick days. So it, are those quarantine days? Because we're not talking just seven days, we're talking two weeks. Ten, ten, close to three weeks of our paid four days.
Well, you're talking, yeah, so totally, we're talking like five to six weeks between these two holidays. Quarantining would be like four, like, well, if, if, let's, let's say that you know, an individual had to quarant, like quarantine at that Thanksgiving area, that would be two weeks, right? So your 14 days, your weekends, your 10 school days, that you'd have your two weeks there. Quarantine doesn't mean the person is ill. That doesn't mean that they can't perform some functions from a digital perspective or do some significant planning to help with a substitute who might be doing something in person. So you have to work with those situations individually. Not particularly the easiest thing to do. None of this has really been the easiest, you know, thing to do, but we have to go and work with every situation separately. Like it's just because you're quarantined, it doesn't mean you're, no, doesn't mean you're not working.
Right, okay.
So just some historical stuff, if we want to go to that, that one. That slide. Basically, this is, there's some real, real data that we've been collecting. It's kind of the back, some of the, some of it's the backend data that informs the matrices that we have online every single day. So we get all this information reported by 2:00 PM every school day. That's roughly the end of the day for the middle high school. And we start to, once it's put in there, it tells us whether we're strained. We got formulas into all these cells and so forth, whether things are normal, whether it's beyond that. And so this just kind of shows what our trends have been so far. Absence due to illness doesn't mean it's absence due to COVID. It could be absence due to allergies. It'd be absence, matter of fact, we haven't had that absence with students having absence due to COVID. But the, nevertheless, we are still also looking at absences due to illness because of the numbers of individuals who are in here and the strain that puts on the system if more and more kids are sick, even if it's the flu or something else. It adds strain to the entire system, adds strain to our nursing department and so forth, because they have to continue to go on with the protocols that we've adopted and that the state is indicating we should be, you know, doing. And then we, like, September 24th, 25th, 28th, 29th, 30th, you can see those. Here's the early October. If, if, if it's blank, it means it's a Wednesday or a vacation day or, or something of that nature. So that's, this is more or less where we're at. You can see that some of those days are identical to the ones I showed you earlier as to what we're kind of hypothesizing based upon the data. And so far, even those strained areas have, we've been able to perform the functions that we needed to function. So it's very rare that we have, we've had all five, I'm sorry, all four locations strained, but we've certainly had several times when three out of the four were. Some things that we are currently working on, knowing that we have some time here to work on this. This thing, lots of, lots of things can change. But student teachers, we have some student teachers that we can look to be hiring substitutes. They're getting out of their time. They've been working with us. That's, those are some things that we're looking at. We have, I've connected with both Franklin Pierce University and King State, looking for those individuals who live in the area, preferably education students who are not going to be going out of the region, things of that nature that are gonna be causing, you know, causing them to have to quarantine or anything like that. See if there is interest in them during that timeframe, since they're gonna be going remote most likely during those months, that maybe they would have the opportunity on days here and days there to do some substituting. There's a possibility that in the January timeframe that you know, once again, you get the, that's, that's two months away, two and a half months away, but looking at the data right now, it is conceivable that we might, you know, have to say, all right, pre-K starts a little bit later so that we can make sure that we have everything the way that we need it to be for the majority of our learners, since pre-K is not a mandated grade level.
Could, could you do all pre-K? You could do all pre-K? Some pre-K is mandated, right?
Oh, well, anything that is having to do with identified students, yeah, we'd have to be careful. We'd have to look at that some more, but there would be some ability to to change up some of that scheduling.
Kindergarten isn't mandated either, is it?
It isn't. You could look at kindergarten, but again, we wouldn't, in no scenario does it look like we'd have to do something like that in order to remain in our current model. So this is some of the information that we're looking at. We're looking at number of new infections per, this is just as a reminder. This is all from DPHS, which is a subset of DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services. Taking directly from them. We update this every single day. It looks like they had a little bit of a blip early on with their data in this, sorry, early October, the 2nd and the 5th, but we just use their numbers anyway. So number of new infections per 100,000 over 14 days, number of hospitalizations over the prior 14 days, and the COVID-19 PCR test positivity as a seven-day average. And so there are some percentages, we have on our website as to what those thresholds are to go into higher degree, you know, medium ranges or severe areas. Right now, all the numbers are pointing the green. The lower number hasn't gone very high, certainly, and the hospitalizations, you know, aren't high. We have certainly heard of, I think it's, it's important to note that if you read the paper, you listen to the news, certainly Hillsborough County, Rockingham County in New Hampshire has seen some uptick in cases. Cheshire County, though, there hasn't necessarily been an uptick, because it seems like as some go away, maybe another few come in. There have been some cases in schools. Not so much in the schools, but people who are, yeah, related to the schools. So we keep in close contact with the other superintendents as to how things are going there across the region.
Excuse me, Ruben?
Yes.
These numbers are really odd to me. I almost think that these are New Hampshire COVID stats per 100,000. It doesn't make sense that Cheshire County, Cheshire County has 76,000, roughly 76,000 residents. And I know from watching the data daily, because that's why. But like we, we're, if we have one, we have one. If we have, you know, it's, we've had, we haven't had four in a day for quite some time. So I'm a little, I'm not, I understand the, the effort to demonstrate this, but could you help me understand the numbers? Because the numbers are confusing.
Well, Cheshire County, I mean, I'd have to go to the chart itself that we get it from the website, but Cheshire County is not just Jeffrey and Ridge. So Jeffrey and Ridge, where we have, I think we, as of today, well, as of yesterday, I mean, when I look at, we still are at zero cases.
This is over the prior 14-day period, so it's the sum total of 14 days looking back.
But, but throughout the entire county, so King's involved in that.
I'm saying, Cheshire County daily, we're lucky if we, I'm not lucky, we're not lucky if we get one. So if it's one over 14 days, it, that's 14 in that 14 days. And so like, I guess I'm trying to figure out this number, 47.4 or 14.
Right, and Ruben said that he thought that the 2nd and the 5th were a blip, like the quarantine.
No, yeah, I think those numbers were off. It probably should have been 17.
It just looked elevated to me. I don't know why.
And today's looks higher.
So I'm, I'm not disputing it. I'm not pretending it doesn't make sense.
Nick's brought up it.
So Nick, Nick has brought up.
I'm working to pull the specific spot that the data is capable from. I'm just trying to find.
Yep. I think it's a good question. And so we can pull up the data right here.
And just to be clear, so on our website, our dashboard is not yet because we haven't had any, any incidents of it. So once, not that we will, if we did, that's where we would find our dashboard tab, our school numbers, our district numbers.
Well, if we had anything that was confirmed within our district, and that would be a staff member or a student. I'm not talking about staff members, relatives and things like that, or students, relatives, you know, elsewhere. That was specific to our our local community right in here, then we'd be letting people know anyway.
Correct, correct. But it doesn't, it's not up yet because there's nothing to report.
Right. So if you were to look at the Jeffrey, the school system, you'd see zero for, for those spaces. That's correct.
So active cases, or I see we're clicked on cumulative cases.
I'm sorry to take this detour. I just,
Here we go, 14-day moving average of the other metric. So I'll, I'll let, I'll let Nick look at this.
I'm not putting you on the spot.
There's a specific spot that we're trying to pull from, that we've been pulling the data from. I'm just trying to find that specific model so that we can get it up on the screen for folks.
Well, it says there's cumulative cases, 174 in Cheshire. If you edit those, you can.
So, and I love the, I think that's really cool enough. But everybody should remember that Conan is under C, it's not under Jeffrey and Renshaw.
Yeah, so this is, this is the specific, oh, up, up top.
Community level transmission.
Community level transmission, Cheshire or Cheshire. And then you'd have level of transmissions minimal, new cases per 100,000, over a 14-day period is 27.5, and that's the number that we would have. So that's, that's where we're getting the information from, right there.
Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem.
So 27.5 for the entire county, knowing that we have 76,000 people, not even 100,000 people in our county over the course of 14 days.
Right, so one case would probably be a little bit more than one.
Forget, oh, God, Matt, just what I painted these.
Yeah, it, it, it rolled. So, so day 15, that number,
14 days.
15 days ago, that number is not, no longer inside this. That's right.
It's rolled.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if we go back to the, the slide there, probably the last two slides, just speak to the data that we have suggests that we can use, once again, using the data from travel outside of New England. Okay? That using that information right there and what the state is saying we need to do, we can continue to use the decision-making matrix that we have. That is not to say that in the next month, those, you know, numbers from student absenteeism due to illness or transmission within a school facility or you know, other illnesses or this other aspect of Cheshire County transmission couldn't be very different. But that's going to impact our model anyway. So and that can happen anytime. That can happen next week. Or it might not happen. You know, it was stated earlier in a public session that our model is not a hybrid. That, that, that's fine for, you can call it whatever you want to. We specifically called it JR-CSDs hybrid. There are a lot of different types of hybrids. You heard the definition of hybrid earlier when when Mary was talking about the learning approach. Hybrid simply in-person and online, that's the definition we use. We have some online, we have some in-person. More of it is in-person. That is very true. And a hybrid certainly can be two days a week doing one with one cohort and two days a week with another cohort, or two and three, that's another one that's out there. There is a Week A and a Week B model out there. There's, there's several different ones that, that you could, you know, certainly, different school districts are using. There are a few districts in the area, in the region, talking to some superintendents, one close by and one about half an hour to 40 minutes away. They're changing to what we're doing. But and, and there's some literature out there that suggests that it's safer to have the group together all the time so that on the days off, they're not going to different types of other groups that are going on and different types of childcare and so forth. So, yeah, it's just, that was just to explain to, you know, anyone else kind of what the JR-CSD hybrid is. It is not the same. That word hybrid is not the same as what some other schools have used for the term hybrid. That's a fair, that's a fair assessment. But we did, what we did here was we took the, as, just as a reminder, we took the standard given to us as a suggestion, as a recommendation by New Hampshire DPHS. And we took their matrix and indicated where they had, if they had like, for instance, minimal level of community transition, current transmission, but their level of school impact was high, their model still had some form of a hybrid in there. As the same thing with, if the instructional model, the level of school impact was low and the community transmission was substantial, it still had some sort of a level of a hybrid. What we're doing there is that anytime there is substantial of any kind, it's, it means that it needs to be remote, whether it be school or two schools or a district. Obviously, there are some other things where DPHS might say, you need to quarantine, you know, a specific class or something like that. That's possible. That's happened in some other schools. Not too much around here, but just to kind of give you the big picture of that. So this is a discussion. Certainly decisions can be made if you so desire to as a board tonight as to where we are standing. You might have more questions. But just wanted to give you the information based upon the data, and based upon all we've experienced so far. This is what I think we can continue with.
We can anticipate this, given if the current situation continues.
If the current situation continues. But if the current situation does not continue, then that means community transmission is going to go up, and that's where things are going to be changing, yeah. Doesn't mean Jeffrey's levels will go up at that point in time.
Right. All right. Questions and comments? I know we've been kind of doing it as we go, but.
Thank you, Ruben, this was helpful.
What was that?
I said, thank you, this was helpful.
It's really complex, too.
It is, it is, it's not, it's not really black and white. All the time, there are a lot of moving parts.
No discussion.
All right, Brenda, I guess I'm just curious, like, when do we need to, you know, what we're doing as far as this goes, like, when do we need to make a decision?
Well, there's, there's two things, right, so.
Have we finished gathering everything so we can put it into the matrix, I guess, and decide?
You might, right now, say, you know what? I'd like to have this other information before making a decision, you know, that is not in line with this one right here. This decision, a non-decision, is from this board right now, it's just saying what this is.
We're going to do what we.
It's going to continue on moving what we've already said we're going to do, right? So that's, I'm just saying that based upon the information we have, we can do that. The, if you were to want to go into another realm, for instance, you know, a, a school, some schools nearby are saying we're going to go remote during that time and through, say up to, I don't know, the 15th or 16th of January, when you consider all the time for, that you would have to quarantine and so forth. You know, around Martin Luther King Day, which is a kind of a mark for some people. If that were the case, you can make the decision, say, you know, that those gatherings that, that people are saying they're going to have, the, where 20% say they're going to be going to have some gatherings, or, you know, more staff are going to go to some gatherings as well. Once again, I have to believe that our staff is going to be taking necessary precautions as, as this is, you know, has been important for them to take precautions for us all. The, you know, we could, we could make some changes there if you thought was something the board wanted to do. If you said, I just need, I need, I don't know, I don't even know what that information would be, but I need such and such information. If you can get that and bring it back to us, we can make a more informed decision.
We don't need to make this decision, if, should we think about changing it? We don't have to make that decision tonight.
Yeah, that's what was.
We have a board meeting first weekend of November.
Yeah, no, it does not have to be made tonight, that's why we put it under discussion.
Yep.
Was it made clear in your survey that the results of this survey would be used to, as a decision-making tool on whether or not to be remote?
We did, and we were certainly not that specific with it. We, I indicated that the survey was to help us make decisions around the educational situation during the holidays, the season. I didn't specifically say whether we are going to remain in the current model or to go remote, that was not stated.
I just wondered.
Because I thought also that could skew, skew the data.
Sure, if families understood ramifications of a large number of people leaving New England and/or gathering in large groups.
Well, that was definitely spelled out inside that, yes.
Change.
Yep.
But I have to say, I mean, we're not talking about 50%, we're not talking about 75%, we're talking about 5%, so it sounds like minority percentage is, you know, I, I personally wouldn't be comfortable making any changes to our plan based on that statistic. I, you know, on the flip side, whatever, 95% of people, 94% of people are hanging around, definitely, hanging around Ridge. What's another muscle of that?
So I guess I'm thinking that if we're to, to do something that is a pretty big shift, that that's going to impact working families. And they would need just some heads up and time to accommodate a change. Or, you know, because if they're, if they're not, if they're someone who's going to work every day and then all of a sudden, you know, they're going to have two or three kids at home.
Sure.
That's going to greatly change what their life is, what's happening, their, their routine, their, their ability to work.
I hear that, but I agree with, with what you just said, based on the information given.
I agree as well.
Fine, I think that our decision-making matrix.
Yes.
Will stand us in good stead.
And that's all I'm saying is like, if for any reason we think we're going to do something other than what we've already said, this is our matrix, then we, we need to do that.
provided the better, especially I represent that working elementary mom, so obviously if I'm not able to go to work, my children also still need to be able to, to do their learning. And so the earlier, you know, working families can plan for that, certainly the better for them and the better for the kids in the end.
I think that's, again, it's part of.
Any, any change is going to be disruptive to everybody, all the stakeholders, okay? So if we're going to do anything like that, what the stakeholders want is to know ahead of time, as much lead time as they can get. So it would behoove us to set the criteria for what is going to cause the change. And I think we've all agreed up until now that we're going to use the matrix. The one that we used for last month, and the one that we, we used before. So if people want to predict when the change is going to occur, they need to look at the criteria in the matrix. Because if you, if you see these cases in, in Cheshire County going through the roof, you can anticipate we're going to have to react to that.
Yep, absolutely.
As far as staffing issues are concerned, Ruben has already addressed that. We've, we're in a situation where we think we can mitigate it, at least mitigate it well enough that we don't have to abruptly change to remote. So I think that in the foreseeable future, we're going to be driven by external circumstances and not necessarily internal ones.
Yeah, and just to clarify, because I did see a comment that was provided. And I think I did clarify this earlier, but I want to clarify again, because I do think it's important. When I say staff, this, this survey was provided to the entire, all employees of the Jeffrey and Ridge School, the school district. So, again, you have to look at the different categories and where they are and so forth, because, you know, someone who, I don't know, would be largely working in an office all day long and not interacting with people, would have less impact, for instance, on the school district approach than someone who's with someone. But it is true that out of that, I mean, 218, it's a huge percentage of, of employees that took this survey. So we're thinking those numbers are pretty accurate. That, that's, but the staff does mean, SAU, the staff does mean people who are under the JRSSA contract, under the JREA contract. Yeah, and actually, even some of our, our contracted service providers, school psychologists, people like that, were in the mix as well. Because if we don't have them, sometimes, depending on the time of year and so forth, it can be tough.
So, I mean, it doesn't show it in the stuff that we've presented here, but you can mine it and know exactly, like, what grade level, what school, where the strain is, and where we need to put that so that people are well-prepared.
Yeah.
That's helpful to them, because that wasn't, I didn't totally understand that depth in this presentation. So I'm glad that we have that information, we can kind of get down to that level.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of identifiable information that we wouldn't want to, you know, present, because I think people took, took the survey in good faith.
And who was ever closed?
The, I think the staff one might be closed. The, the family one, I don't know if it was closed, I mean, certainly, for this purpose, I was just, you know, I, I'm not looking back at it again. Again, all of our information, once, the last couple of years when we put surveys out to families, once we get past that 250, 300 mark, the percentage might change, it might change a percent if, if, you know, and it could be either direction.
Okay. All right, so what I'm gathering is we're sticking with our matrix and keeping an eye on things as they develop. Yep?
It's really nice to, like, see the matrix sort of in action in this last slide.
Yeah.
And sort of see that place, that's all I hope folks to visualize.
Have you guys seen the matrix on the website?
I've seen it, but not just like with the, not in this way, like the percentages and the, I don't know, just. I'm a visual person, so that's very helpful.
I was just going to say, because if, if anybody wanted to see it, we can put it up on the screen real quick, just to kind of add people to it and.
Well, that wouldn't be a bad thing to put it up so that if anyone's watching, he doesn't know that it's there.
Yeah, so we, we've had it up for a couple of weeks now, I don't mean displays daily data, but as with most COVID mutations, you click the big red area at the top of the screen, that's going to bring you to another page. First thing, you know, we have all our different school stuff down later, but the first thing is these resources. And the first thing is the decision-making matrix. And then, little explainer, as Ruben said, you know, there's a range, if you click in here, and that gives you the, the information on what constitutes as a, you know, minimal, moderate, substantial, low, medium, high.
Guidelines, yeah.
And then we actually have each of the boxes, these are updated daily in the afternoon on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, because those are the days in which we have folks in school. So they don't get updated on like a remote Wednesday, for example, because we can't, you know, capture the data of people in school if we're not in school, so.
Right, great. Thanks, Nick. Okay, moving on, we've got two action items. The reopening framework, there's, I think, a slight change in that. And then, as Laurel added earlier, there's a budget transfer regarding the.
Nursing services.
Nursing services, right.
Do you want me to just highlight those?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so two major areas that we made changes to in the reopening framework, I'll put them up on the screen real quick. The first one just deals with out-of-state travel, just kind of, there was an updated state document that we referenced, and we just kind of tried to put our language, we added some language into our documents that it aligns more closely with what actually is said by the state, you know. The big thing is just the self-quarantining and self-monitoring, 14 days after traveling outside of New England. Important to note that a negative COVID test does not end the need to self-quarantine, it is a 14-day. It's not like if you test negative on day two, you can just come back. And then also just specifying a household member, and because of that, we did rework the flowcharts, but took, took this as an opportunity to rethink kind of how we have them. So flowchart one is now a consolidation of the first two flowcharts, and it's looking if you are somebody with symptoms. So you start with, I have developed a new symptom, whether you're currently at home or at school. We have a, you know, orange path for the staff, a purple path for the students. You know, in most cases, it does kind of end up to the encouragement of a COVID test, and then the idea of if you test or not test, what, you know, kind of is the end result. So again, that's a consolidation of two, and then using the opportunity to look at some of the language that we've added when it comes to travel guidance and things like that. So we now have a, it's two flowcharts on one page, so the first one just looks at travel guidance, and there's the kind of two linking purple areas. So if you have been notified that you have been in close contact, you can just go to the right side and follow that. But if you go through this travel guidance and you make it to this purple box, should, you know, a household member, a visitor, a visitor develop a newer unexplained symptom, then you fall in that close category, in the close contact, then you bump up to that right one, and then you would follow the channels. And then obviously, if you're in this asymptomatic flowchart and then you develop symptoms, obviously you would just stop wherever you're, you are in this pathway, and you would move up to the top, and then you would, you know, progress to that. So the, the idea was just to give a better channel of, rather than differentiating student and staff, just kind of saying, I have a symptom, I don't have a symptom, and then you can just place yourself and you can work your way through as needed.
That does seem to flow better, it's much easier to read, I'm sure, thank you for doing that.
All right. So, I'm open for.
Moving to the revisions to the opening to the framework.
Okay, Laurel, thank you.
Oh, second.
Alicia, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? All right, 7-0-0. And then the budget transfer for the nurses, the nurse service?
Okay, so the district's going to contract with the nursing service to provide support and coverage. We're requesting a budget transfer of $64,000 to salaries, salaries. Oh, I'm sorry, from salaries tier two, to professional services other, $16,000 for each of the four schools. So this is sort of a three-fold request, one is approval on the budget transfer, the second is a request to waive the bid requirements for this service, given that we are in an emergency situation. And to authorize Ruben to execute the contract for the pro-care therapy for this service.
Okay.
I'll say, if it's all right.
Yeah.
Jen Orin spent quite a bit of time trying to find different agencies for this purpose, and while all of them would love to work with us, only one could guarantee us the nursing service, and that's his pro-care. So we actually have, we did try.
Right.
A variety of different organizations, we actually have an agreement, or had an agreement with a local organization to provide nurses, you know, they don't have them, so.
Okay, okay, so I would make a motion that we approve this budget transfer of $64,000 from salaries that are in us.
This is something also that if we were to get what we believe the governor has stated.
Oh, I, I'm there.
Oh, sure, fine.
To professional services other for each of the four schools, $16,000 each. Authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract of pro-care services for this nursing service. Waive the bid requirements, because this is a, due to public emergency. And I specified that language because it should allow us to tap into any present or future COVID-related funds we might receive.
Very good. Second, thank you, Charlie. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, that carries 7-0-0, thank you. All right, policy review? We have a first reading?
Uh, second.
Second reading.
Next question. Of course. Procedure for consideration under a manifest educational hardship, looks like it automatically resolved in a board hearing.
I, yes, I believe that was one of the significant differences between these two procedures.
Okay. Regardless of whether based on the initial application. And so the board can't reject the implication.
No. Not legally, not legally.
Okay.
Nope.
Is that a change?
No.
Look, we had applications and we have not considered.
They could have been for a change of school.
Changes, yeah.
Which is why we.
We had, we had a conversation at the right, sorry, the left side of this. We have not had many, if at all, manifest hardship over the last few years.
Did we allow for someone to, under consideration of a change of school or assignment, should the superintendent say no to go to the board? It doesn't look like.
Sorry, Laurel, continue. Can you repeat that?
That with this matrix, under, on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
Request for a change of school or assignment, that the superintendent's decision is final and there's no possibility of him appealing to the board.
The reason I ask, it relates to your previous question. I do recall that some times in the past where the superintendent has consulted with the board regarding a case where manifest educational hardship might or might not apply. Now, Ruben, I don't know if I'm remembering that correctly, but I remember you bringing a couple of these cases to us back several years ago.
It may very well, I mean, anything of that nature would be a non-public situation around a student. But it may very well be that due to conversations or emails with parents and conversations that have that, that, that sort of thing, might come to the board and giving it the heads up.
But wasn't Laurel's question about the left side?
It was about the left side. Number, the section number five says that the decision will be final. This is from NH.
I was just gonna say, we definitely prospect this with what was recommended, but it just came.
So in the past, when someone has requested that they, you know, their child go to Jeffrey Gray School, or the RMS, or vice versa, it has come to the board. And typically, we agree, provide there's capacity, and we ask that there be a reapplication every year.
So we, yeah, so there's a couple of different things. This is not really what this was talking about. This is, well, this is about us taking one of our students and saying, because of, it's better for them, that we want to send them to this school over here. Say, Mid-Adenoc Regional School District, we may send them that way. Or Conville might be a better placement for them. So it's not so much doing anything within our system or.
It, it could be technically, it does.
It does, it does, because we, we do that.
But it is more about the ability to do that outside of, as they.
That's right.
On the left-hand side?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's limits, there's limits to the amount you can do it in a year.
Yeah.
That's what number six talks about.
When policy met, we didn't change this substantially, we just brought the two things together. Just to be clear, like, rather than have the, you know, a policy over a year to policy over a year, we thought we would just consolidate. So really, actually, that's the only change that we could make.
And I applaud that consolidation. I'm just, so in this instance, this is talking about a reassignment to a school. It could be a district placement. I mean, that's what this is about.
Yes.
But, oh, this is based on the, the request of a parent.
Right.
Not the decision of the school. So this, this would allow the superintendent to make a decision that, yep, we agree that this student should go to Conville.
Yes.
And we will pay tuition.
Yes.
And you don't have to go to the board for it?
Underneath the.
That's the second part.
The, not, not hardship, I mean, that's hardship. Let me scroll back up. It's a, it's for the best interest of the pupil. That's what.
There has to be a.
There has to be a, a reason for that, the best interest of the pupil. Best interest could be, oh, I don't know, we, we just, the school doesn't offer a specific program that this one student really needs or would significantly benefit from. And so the parent can make a request, make an argument for this, and we, I could consider this and say, yeah, it is in the best interest. You typically don't make decisions like this if the school can offer or if it can find, you know, an appropriate way to go about doing things. It doesn't, it's not a very common.
It's not about pedagogy at all. It's gotta be something bigger than.
It's gotta be a little more significant, yeah.
I don't mean bigger, but I mean, it'd have to be something normal and different.
Whereas a manifest hardship would be something where the school district really couldn't provide the education for this student because of a variety of things. Like, say, for instance, the student has been bullied and the district hadn't dealt with it or can't deal with it for whatever reason, then safety sometimes is implied there. You know, so it is different.
I mean, your third?
So could, could this be done, like, for a sports issue, like, if there was a, if we didn't have a, like, a hockey team and it was something very important to this family, would that qualify or is that? How do you make those decisions?
Well, I think a parent could ask about that.
Well, given that best interest of the pupil is pretty broad, it's not even best educational interest.
Yeah. We'd have to, I mean, if the.
Pretty big argument there, but.
Yeah, it would be quite, quite an interesting conversation. But I suppose, again, if you had, for instance, a situation where a student was ultra-talented, I don't know, let's just use tennis because that's a cool sport. You know, it was like looking to be going pro or something like that. They need to be a specific school. Like, you know, I can see that happening. It's different than saying, I really love hockey.
I mean, I had a friend whose son went to skiing school, so that, you know, high school, and his whole, like, Killington.
Sure.
Did his home district pay for them?
I don't know. I don't recall the parent asking. But that would be an instance where they, if they couldn't afford it, but this was really gonna benefit this kid and completely change their life, they could request.
So am I hearing that there needs to be some more clarification?
I mean, we took this from NH SBA, so we can take a second look, but I'm not sure what, based on what we would clarify. I guess if you have that feedback, that would be really helpful for me.
Well, maybe number three on the left. Insert educational or best interest. I don't know. Maybe it doesn't matter. I think if, if, if Ruben decided to send someone to ski school because that would be, there would be other issues. Exactly. More, your mom.
So, I mean, do you want to send it back for the addition or are we gonna adopt?
If you want to take some time to think about it, we can certainly table this second reading or.
I mean, policy-wise, these policies exist as they are. And so if we need to have a little bit of time to think about it, to think about whether we want to do something to give us some suggestions, we can certainly meet again. Whereas although there were a few changes here and there, they weren't substantive. It was more of a stylistic.
Yeah. We are meeting at the end of the month, so if you want to take the next, like, week, you have to think about it. You can email me any suggestions, anybody?
Well, I'm picking up on John's point. The way the language is written, it does not make it clear one way or the other, whether athletics or talent or anything else figures into it, other than the best interest of the student.
Yeah, that's certainly true. I think it's a great point. We've been staring at this policy for weeks and months, so that's why we bring it here to you all. And so this feedback is definitely helpful.
Okay. So I think there's no harm in trying to think if there's a way of making it a little more clear for what our intent would be. Yeah? All right. Thanks. Okay.
Hi, the chair.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just another question for the policy committee. Well, last week when we did our first reading on this, one we just discussed, we also had a decision on policy EHC regarding board communications with staff and decided to maintain that policy as is. And I just have a question because, you know, in looking at that and hearing the discussion, I took a closer look at the policy and the first two paragraphs, which I think are the key, you know, raised sort of a question for me, I just wanted to ask. So we say that the board desires to maintain open channels of communication between itself and staff. The basic line of communication, however, will be through the superintendent, which, you know, makes sense to me. But then we say all communications or reports to the board or any board committee from staff members shall be submitted through the superintendent. So my, my question is, does that imply that the superintendent then has the responsibility to pass those communications onto the board? I'm sorry, it's for the policy committee. And I guess, you know, the follow-up to that is, if a said person does desire that, do they have to say that? You know, communicating with the superintendent, how does that work basically?
All right.
So I can add that to the agenda. I don't really have an answer for that. I mean, we spent quite a lot of time reviewing that policy and looking over the recommendation of the NH SBA, so I guess that's something that we'll have to revisit. Because I don't, I don't really have an answer to that as to. Yeah, I think that's something we need to come together, that is, if we need to talk about.
You know, the reason I asked, I, I've thought about this like we all have, and it's true. If the communication doesn't go through the superintendent, I think that that works against good order. But on the other hand, I think we should at least be clear on what's the, what's the procedure and, and what's, you know, what the person communicating to the superintendent should expect. And I don't know the answer to that exactly either, but I think some clarification would help.
We certainly, as a board, I don't think could hear everything that goes, that our superintendent hears. Because that's just not realistic. He hears a lot more than.
Our meetings will be way too long.
Yeah.
I, here we go. John, if you have suggestions, I'm sure that we, you know, clearly take them under advisement and look at them and see if we can change the policy to reflect that. We were asked whether we should make substantive change to the policy. And there are three reasons why the policy is what it is. Now, there's nothing in the policy that says the superintendent has to take the input that he receives and send it to the board or vice versa. So do you have suggestions about that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how to, to, to address what you're, the questions you're asking.
Yeah, just like with JCA, the combined policy, I mean, any feedback that you have is helpful with us. I mean, we're kind of free.
So I just sent a link to.
I got that, thank you.
Okay. And it looks like they also addressed tuition and transportation. That's interesting.
Okay. So you're gonna have a longer meeting next time?
I'm sorry.
That's all.
Well, we're just gonna do these two policies again.
Okay.
Just to go back on the agenda. It's all right. One good thing.
I do love the fact that the, you know, put them on for first reading and for second reading, and this is why we do that. So it's not often that we go back.
Right.
Like, very rarely, but I think that that's good.
Yep. Process works.
Well, sometimes it takes some time to, you know, dwell on things. But if anyone else has any other ideas regarding whether these, we're meeting on the 29th, so definitely get back, feedback to me.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, committee updates. Education committee. Charlie? Can you say a few words?
Yes. The education committee reviewed a lot of the raw data relative to the holiday.
The matrix stuff.
The holiday matrix, yes. And basically, our message to the superintendent was to do what he could to maintain a status quo, because as we said earlier, there are all kinds of issues that arise when we make a change. So if there was a way of mitigating any of these issues, we should do it and not make any changes unless we can forewarn people and have a good plan for what those changes are.
Other conversations were around the first curriculum instruction assessment team meeting that we had, which just kind of, we poured out, you know, a lot of conversation around what happened during the summertime, the curriculum work, how we can roll that out, the need for some procedures that need to be developed, the need to start planning out, you know, data, to start planning out, you know, the focus and communication on the education, sorry, the instructional side of things. And so tomorrow is our second meeting, but specifically with the leaders of those, so that we can take all that information that we discussed of the whole group last week and kind of put it into a plan or start planning. So I'm excited about the work that we are gonna undertake.
You have a few days coming up, remember?
I don't believe we do.
Right, and we also did talk a bit about the Leadership Academy, the second cohort.
Yeah, Leadership Academy, talked about the information. Yep, Leadership Academy. Talked about the information that was given back to me at least from the well, the primary teachers of the Leadership Academy, Peg Losniak from King's Day College and Rick Niselli and a couple of the other ones. I have spoken with all the professors. We had about 22 or 23, about 22 anyway, individuals, teachers who completed the Leadership Academy. And so that's exciting. The group that has started this year is going to go through a pace that is half the pace of what the last group did. It's a smaller group, about 10 individuals. And
Twice as fast or half as fast?
Half, half as fast. So it, it's going to take twice as long to do it. And so the there is actually a new book. It's kind of neat. The, the first course they focus on has a lot to do with culture. And so there's another book that they're adding to the course this year, so I think increase the focus on that aspect of it, which is neat. So something that I haven't read yet, so it'll be good to see, good to read it. Small book.
Sounds good.
Sixty pages.
All right. And then the next committee was the facilities.
I have a question. So 22 completed. How many started?
Thirty. Well, thirty, thirty-two. Both one was an administrator who was taking a couple of courses, so was never going to go through all. And a couple of individuals probably within the first week or two had to pull out of the program. So then out of the rest of it, 22 finished all five courses. There were some who finished like three of them. Spring hit and then, you know, the having to be online during the summertime or like three. But those individuals have the opportunity to, the next time around, jump into those courses.
Great.
Yep.
And I think one of the things we also talked about was that a lot of our newer teachers are taking advantage of this.
Right?
Yeah. That's very exciting.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions around Education Committee? If not, we'll move on to Facilities.
So Facilities Committee met this morning and we've talked about a number of items. One being security cameras, which are in the process of being procured. Either the placement cameras, there are still some locations that need cameras. I trust that procurement will proceed at pace. We have made some recommendations on how to perhaps streamline that process. Getting this infrastructure in place. We also discussed the district parking lots and wondering if we should simply rather than trying to scheme new ways to design circulation around the schools, simply replace our current parking lots. We've basically folded through construction at this campus and at Jennifer Grace School with our repair at RMS. Rather than going through full blown design and trying to recreate the wheel, perhaps we should just fix what we've got. Rather than kicking it down, kicking the cam down the road again. So we're thinking about that. I don't have any updates on our architect engineering firm. We do not have any schedule from them yet. If we do not have some sort of feedback from them by Wednesday, Marcia and I are going to call them. And ask them if they really want to work for us. I'm happy to report that our Chair Marcia is all over our new facilities garage and making sure the lights are white.
That's right.
I was really pleased to see on tonight's agenda that we have two custodial hires. That's terrific. And John Leclair's advertising now for a custodial supervisor, which I think will help the district immensely once that person is in place and up their own. We do have a contract with the Forester who has done the preliminary, or I guess the survey at RMS and is putting out a soliciting for bids for clear cutting all of the land that we bought between the school parking lot and the historical society. And also repair work and maintenance of property lines. So there should be, and the goal is to have that work done during Christmas break. So that will be a big change in the landscape there. And we talked about a bunch of other stuff, but those are the highlights. We did, one other thing that we did talk about is again, furthering our research into the ventilation capacities and what we're providing in the schools. We have engaged an outfit called WM Engineering. That's shorthand because it's a German name that I can't get my mouth around. Anyway, they are doing a preliminary assessment and will develop a proposal for us based on that assessment. And they'll be on campus Wednesday.
Right. And I need to go with them because they also have more of a specialism than the other engineering group that we engaged.
I think they answered the phone. But they do. They, they have geared up to respond to COVID.
Right. All right. Any questions for support facilities? All righty then.
Wonderlic Malic.
Thank you.
W N D E R L I C H hyphen capital M A L E C. Not the easiest.
They are, they're giant.
Huge.
Engineering firm, multinational.
Yeah.
All right. We have no strong ways to capitalize on this. All right. So I think we're ready to do public comments. Second.
Yeah, so we are back in public comment session number two. So if, I, I guess I'll just go through the process one more time. Three ways to comment. You can do one of three things. You can raise your hand. Digitally, of course, you could use the chat feature and you could text six zero three nine three three zero nine seven three. In any of those cases, please use first, last name and town of residence. We already have somebody with their hand raised. Lindem Morgan Cooper.
Hi, I'm Morgan Cooper. I live in Peterborough and I teach the multi-age class, the four or five class at JGS. And I'm one of the few that did finish all of the leadership course this summer. But um my concern and the reason I stayed on was I wanted to hear what our plan was about through the holidays. And just a concern, if we do go to remote, I know it was already brought up and I know we're thinking of staying with the status quo. Is that there are statistics that this pandemic has affected the demographic of single parents, specifically single mothers, very heavily. More so women than men because they're often in jobs that are lower paying. But it would like, if we were to go remote, I feel like we need to have a plan in place that supports specifically our elementary age students who has a parent who needs to be at work because that's what pays the rent and puts food on the table. So I don't know what that plan could look like, whether it's that students have a place they go to and their supervision to help with their remote learning, if it goes to that, or whether we have homes that are kind of like pods that kids go to or something. But I want to make sure that we are specifically making sure that we are supporting the families of our younger students who cannot be home alone during the day.
Yep. Thank, thanks very much, Morgan. We, that was definitely part of the discussion in my subcommittee.
Yeah, just for anybody on the other side of the room, that was Morgan Cooper, JGS teacher. She was just talking about specifically statistics around single parents, single mothers, looking out for our families at the, especially at the elementary grade level. Specifically, you know, those with single parents, just because they would be the ones most affected by any sort of shift to remote that we have. Just in that, you know, they obviously still would need to work, but wouldn't necessarily be able to leave their children home alone. So just be mindful of that specific population if we, you know, if and when we have to make a change. All right, nothing on the text. I have no more hand raised. I did get one comment. Do you want me to read it aloud?
Is it the SAT one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So I will read, we do have a comment through the chat feature, so I'm just going to read that aloud for everybody. It's from Anne Wheeler of Jaffrey. She says, as a parent of a senior, I wanted to share a few thoughts. I was very pleased that Conant High School was able to offer the SAT last week for our seniors. Countless venues have been canceled over the past several months due to the pandemic placing yet another stress on our college bound students. I was saddened to hear a student was removed from the exam halfway through due to a sneeze. I am extremely COVID cautious, but felt this was a bit extreme in which the student was provided the opportunity to finish the exam in another location. Given the time of year and lack of SAT testing opportunities, a little more thought, should have gone into that decision. Our college bound students are working very hard right now to move forward in their educational careers. As with all other decisions during this difficult times, things need to be made clear to all stakeholders.
Thanks. Okay. None other?
I got nothing right now. We'll just do a last call to everybody. Again, this is the last public comment session. We're going to be concluding the meeting. You know, not that many more items on the agenda. So if you would like to have a public comment, now would be the time to do so.
And while we're waiting, see if anything else comes in. Any board matters? Or a few items? Okay, so Charlie and then John. Charlie?
Yes, we need to change board calendar. Where it has meeting places, the first is Norman Range and then the second of the month is Norman Conant. We need to change them all to Conant. At least through January.
Yeah, I haven't changed anything yet. I've been relying on the agenda to be the physical location place and just the note at the top of the calendar stating that, you know, the locations might not be correct. Obviously, this is the prime location that we have right now for doing this kind of hybrid approach until we come up with a more stable system of video, audio, so on and so forth, that could be a little more mobile. Obviously, some of the technology is specifically tied to a very specific portion of this room. I haven't changed it just because I didn't know if we wanted to make any sort of specific commitment, but if, you know, people agree with Charlie, that's a very easy switch to make.
I'll at least step through, you know, the first part of January, let's say.
Okay. The, the other consideration that I am, you know, trying to plan this out is just be mindful of what what we are going to do specific for the budget type meetings. I know there are certain things we have to do by law. I don't know what, you know, I don't know if the interactive nature that we have with our current board meetings would be as proper for a budget hearing. But we, there probably should be some discussions about how best to handle, you know, COVID deadlines given that meeting.
All right. Okay. John?
And so I actually was going to raise the same question, but from a different perspective. I was wondering whether we were going to start going back to range. And if not, why not? And then here, we're putting out an agenda that says this is a Zoom meeting. Yeah, we've got room here for 10 people and, you know, socially distanced. And if we wanted to, we could go up to the practice presumably or to the cafeteria and, you know, have more people. So I just wonder if at some point we're going to do that and make our meetings open.
Right. So the reason we've been doing it here was because of the microphones and the, the technology.
Do you want me to address?
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, right now, again, this is the best room that we have to broadcast a board meeting if we are going to continue to push forward with the digital meetings. That's something that's in our communication plan. It's clear. We obviously have to push forward and kind of cobble some things together. Just due to COVID, we're working on a better system. The issue that we have with Ridge Memorial School right now is that audit, like audio wise, that current location is very bad. Like it's hard to hear people just talking, let alone picking up audio. There's a lot of equipment in that room that makes a lot of noise. Obviously, like you can hear me if we're literally on opposite sides of the room. There are times that I can't hear, I wouldn't be able to hear Marcia from the length of space that we are away. So there, it, it is a question of scouting another location in range. There are potential solutions and workarounds. A lot of them involve more technology, more manpower. I have two, three, four different conceptual ideas for how we can make things work. We, if we wanted to, we could literally put the board in a room. We could have a viewing room in each town. You know, we could have a screen that's showing people. The issue is that you need people to be able to monitor that. You need people to be able to do, you know.
It sounds great, Nick. So here's a technology I wanted to recommend to people. If you are on Zoom on your computer and you plug in a $5 pair of headphones, not only does it cut out your audio, so you can have your audio volume turned up with app plus feedback, but it also allows you to hear people like Ms. Cooper.
So that's another.
So I mean, that's, that's a low cost solution for one problem.
Well, that's a, we are, I already have a solution in mind for next meeting for the audio issue. Part of the reason is that due to I think the some of these additional components, I've maxed out the amount of USB space I have on a computer. So I need to purchase a USB extender so that I have more. I have
Sure.
I have speakers right here. I don't have anything to plug them into.
No, I, I, that makes perfect sense. However, and this is a question for the board. You know, do we feel we should be meeting in person and encouraging people to commit?
Yes.
And also should we be, you know, looking at fixes? Not only the kind of things that Nick is talking about, but I don't know, maybe there are some low cost solutions. But cafeteria in range has always been terrible. Let's face it. I mean, in terms of all noise. How many times have we forgot to unplug the freezer and somebody in the middle of the meeting goes over and unplugs it, right? So I mean, we have to deal with those things, but.
So part of the issue that I have is.
Let, let, chuckle, chuckle if you don't mind, Nick.
Currently meals are being delivered to classrooms and the kept are being used for storage. So physically, there's not much room in there to hold a meeting. Besides all the technical problems.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Do you feel, John, I mean, have you been getting feedback? I mean, it says in the agenda that members of the public are welcome to come here. And I've heard Nick say at the beginning of meetings that there's 10 open seats. I guess I'm, I'm questioning it. I'm not, I don't think.
We've experienced dramatic, a dramatic increase in attendance with our digital audience that we have not in my time as school board secretary ever had physically. We at a minimum have 20 people that tune in online. Because you know, it's something you, you can be making dinner, you can turn the school board meeting on, you can listen to what's being said. You can chime in if you choose.
I guess that's what I'm wondering, if that, if it is at preference. I mean, hey, pajamas, I get it. So we're not, we're all here.
So I'm not arguing against continuing to have Zoom access. I think that's great. And our town, at least Jackery's been doing that for a while, right? You know, I don't know how effectively we would do here, but the notion that you can be at home and still see what's going on is a great idea.
You can't publicly comment from home.
Yeah.
That's an additional, yeah, additional interaction.
Yeah, Zoom gives us something that, that, that Jaffrey system doesn't. But you know, just thinking, we're, we're all saying that it's really important to have the students back in classrooms. And it is, it is. back in classrooms, and it is, it is, but, you know, I, but there is, you know, some benefit to having people feel that they can come here if they want to, so.
Right, and if the agenda, I mean, I guess how much more do we want to, I mean, it isn't that we're discouraging them, I don't think, are we discouraging them?
Well, we even said publicly at the last meeting that this is something that people can do, like, because somebody brought up the idea that they weren't as aware that this was an option, and maybe there's some more promotion that we can be doing, but notifications on Facebook, agendas, everything says that CHS Music Room is a physical meeting location for this, so whether or not people choose to take advantage of it or not.
In the past, in the past, we did discourage people from coming here.
Yeah, there was a period.
Yep, and so.
But starting in August, would we, we switch back for the exact reasons that if we're, you know, we have to live what we are saying, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we did remember the first, we did do, you and the Pratt.
But the, the, the.
It was just difficult, but we did have some people come.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was a small number, which is why it made sense to come here, because it was just a small number.
And, you know, Mary came tonight and she gave her presentation.
I think though.
So like, for example, and I'm just trying to brainstorm here, I'm not disagreeing really with anything that people are saying, you know, this space, obviously, not only is it much more attractive, it's just down the road for me, it's great, you know, I love it. But over at Ridge, well, what about that library? Couldn't we set up enough room in there to have as many people as this? It looks like the, no, okay.
I mean, we'd have to move on a.
The, the way the stacks are and everything.
Oh, you have to move, yeah, okay.
I like it this way, because then I don't forget which place we're at. Which I've done more than one, more than I wanna admit.
Well, pretty fun.
Well, in a lot of school districts, they have a boardroom where it's all set up with the cameras, the mics, everything. And it's, it's broadcast, and it's on the, the, the local TV and that type of thing.
All right, that's a great idea, so we can pick out a nice classroom in each school and set it up with good, with this non.
Yeah, I think it's a little more involved than that, but, yeah.
It's, it's, so I can see, thinking about RMS, that it would be difficult to carve out a space to improve in, in order to hold public meetings.
So it's a two fold, it's, it's what you said, and then it's getting the technology to support it. The two discussions right now is either a unit that we can, like, like in Jaffrey, they have the, the units that's just in the wall, they have the computer setup, or you add everything that's stable. You know, do we have two rooms, identify them, put the technology in, or do we have more of a mobile unit that can kind of go wherever we need it?
Right, or is there, is there, I mean, how does, how does the select board in Ridge run the meetings? Do they broadcast them at all? Charlie?
They do on Zoom.
Yeah, I see.
So the select board is meeting in their meeting room and they.
Yes, and I have socially distanced chairs.
Well, can we rent their space?
Uh-uh.
How many select people are there?
Three.
Three.
Yeah, well, it's not a very big room.
Well, maybe not, maybe after the time of COVID.
They don't, if they don't have plans, they, some of them do.
I'd be happy to have a, you know, obviously a smaller group, because we need to, you know, have a smaller group, not to have NBA, the, you know, big agenda thing. But like, if we wanted to have a temporary small group of people get together and we could just brainstorm some of these ideas, get a plan so that we're moving forward in a meaningful way, my biggest thing is I just don't want to, I don't wanna be spending $20, get $20 there on a temporary thing and just be coming up with the final plan.
Well, and especially like, you know, this is part of the communication today. This is what, way before COVID, we were working a little way forward, so we want it to be, you know, permanent.
So the real question to me is, are people having difficulty attending? Not necessarily that we should have an auditorium for our meetings.
Well, it seems like we've been.
What's the reason to have an auditorium when those people need it?
I mean, historically, based on, so I, you know, I've been in additional working here covering the district, I've been affiliated for like five or so years, and I would say the average attendance at a school board meeting is, yeah, two, three. You know, if we get a contentious issue or something that, you know, breaks people out, obviously, that can bring in 20, 30, 50, 100, but, you know, most meetings, you're not getting people, and if you're getting people, it's two, three, four people in-house, so the, the digital audience is obviously adding a lot of, you know, folks that we didn't have before.
And even through this discussion, we still have 15 attendees.
I know.
It's dropping, it's dropping, I've been watching.
Obviously, they're not that interested.
All right, can I get a motion? All right, thank you, Heidi, and.
Second.
And everyone, three cheers, huh?
Thank you.
Thanks, all.